Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Okay. Prayer from Steve Ayers, Lifeline Connect Church.
Lord, we just thank you for today. We thank you that you are mighty God. Lord, we thank you that we can celebrate Christmas here. We thank you for the birth of your son. We thank you for the path that you allow for us to heaven. Lord, continue to guide the men and women in our village. Continue to give them protection. And, Lord, we just thank you and we praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody. Start with roll call.
Barth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Egley.
Here.
Klepper.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
And Beverly is sick today.
If you had before you the, let's see, the minutes, last council meeting for your approval.
Make a motion to approve as written.
Second. Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Egley.
Upstain.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes. Approval bills, we have two set, November, yeah, two different. For your approval, we want to do one at a time? Let's just do one at a time. Are any questions on any of them? Only questions, the December 1 bills.
I still see where we have Frontier. We're still paying Frontier. What's the status on our phone update or upgrade?
I have no status.
We don't have an update?
No.
They have the building wired. They're just waiting on parts.
Okay.
That was a month ago.
And will, I guess at that point, will we get invoice for all the phones? So we haven't paid anything for, I haven't seen an S and P bill.
It's so much a month, right?
Yeah, we have to pay for the installation and the phones. And then we'll have a monthly bill.
Okay. Now is that enough front cost? Or will they put that out up front?
Any other questions on either one?
On the Pogomire Design Group, 176076 for water tower design, what is, wasn't that design done a long time ago? And with bids being awarded, what are that, what is that? Is that just like project management type stuff?
Yeah, they pay administrative fees.
Make a motion to pay the bills?
Okay, both of them right?
Yep.
Okay. Second.
My second.
Roll call.
Barth.
Upstain.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Klepper.
Upstain.
Martin.
Yes.
Okay, boards and commissions, nothing was turned in. Was somebody got anything to report on the commissions or boards? Council committee reports, I see we, on your desk, there was the finance meeting minutes on November the 28th.
Yeah, we met a third time to go over the budgets since it would be the third reading tonight. Wanted to make sure Cheryl was good with all the numbers. She had submitted her numbers to the county auditor and she said she was good with all the numbers and the percentage rate that she approved for the employees. Also had some questions on the splash pad. The splash pad got up and running if we had money set aside for operating expenses. And Cheryl said we could move that later if it is up and running. She concerned on that. The big thing the committee stressed, I know Taylor said in the last meeting, really like to have the department heads have budgets in a lot sooner than this year. I think the deadline is normally October 1st and we got them closer toward November. And if we'd like to have a breakdown of all the items when it comes to the capital outlay, contingency and equipment budgets, this way we kind of have an idea what large ticket items you guys are looking to purchase. Just make sure there's not too much fluff in the budget. So, meeting in during 4:45 that day. So unless you have any questions?
As far, I'm just kind of looking through the numbers for Park, the capital outlay, that allowance, does that include the relocation of the soft, or not softball, the volleyball courts? Is that what, is there some money in there?
Yeah, that figure is in there, according to my.
In the park? Yeah, it was, but I don't think it'll come out of, it'll not come out of the park capital outlay.
Where would that come out of?
It'll probably come out of the, for that 650.
That capital project.
Yeah.
The 650. This for demolition, some removals.
Yep. And that number is basically just the number that we can reasonably set aside, not, there's really no breakdown on that, is that correct?
Not yet.
Not yet. So much money just up front for in case we go to get a loan. There's so much money to go down towards it. We used to have some teeth in a rubber and going to shop for interest rates.
Okay. And then, did you guys discuss about the comprehensive plan or master plan?
Yep, we, I think I told you last time, we discussed it and you never got anything from Dennis Miller, correct? Mr. Davis?
No, I, make another contact. I talked to him about two weeks ago. He said, he said it'd be roughly 20 grand, but I haven't got a firm number or an example.
You supposed to give me a copy of that, it seems like what we got. Never provided anything.
Being defiant on Thursday, but I'll call him tomorrow.
Cheryl, something like that, would we be able to pull that out of?
Your hat.
I don't wear a hat.
No, I didn't say hat.
Is that, like, as far as paying for planning on something like that, is that something that we could sort of come up with funds for?
I'm hoping that once we know more about what is involved, we can scale it down for Hicksville and it won't be that much.
But even if it is $20,000, is that something that, I mean, is that something out of capital projects that we could pull out?
You want me to say what you told the finance committee? No extra frills. I mean, we did some raises, we moved some money around with all the projects we have, but mid, mid-year, it was hard to come up with extra money for different projects like that.
Once we have more details about it, of course, it'll be for full council to look at.
Correct. But is that something that basically is a no-go for 23?
I would say no. But I don't have a vote, so.
I'll work on that heart this week. He promised me a month ago.
Okay. And then obviously there's no money set aside for planning for future municipal building as far as architectural fees.
Just to pay for Fainer, for Alexander Bevo, for the three revisions.
But as far as true architectural planning or anything like that, there's no, no money set aside for that either?
Or do all the projects in one year? We have a chunk of money set aside for the pool that could all go towards stuff like that, but.
Exactly. Well, those are.
That's what we wanted to know, you know, if there's fluff in any of the budgets. We didn't get a good itemized list of all the things per, per apartment and see if there's any extra money we could have pulled aside. But that was the number Cheryl felt comfy with setting aside for the pool. Either one or the other, I kind of think was at this time. I think everyone's pushing for the pool compared to a new municipal building at this time.
Yeah, I would agree. I would say, I would, even beyond that, I would lean more towards a comprehensive plan than a municipal building at this point in time, just because that can all be part of the comprehensive plan. Obviously, that's a plan that's a long-term thing, so I think it's something that should be prioritized, because right now we have none.
It'll be good to get an example, how he did Striker, Balding County, see what we're looking at. He thought it might be less, but he, I hate to say.
Yeah.
An exact number.
Yeah.
I'll work on that tomorrow. He promised me three weeks ago, so.
Okay, any other questions for Eric in the committee? Okay. You had a meeting, police fire tonight.
We did. We talked about a lot of stuff. Just with my notes that I've taken, we talked about some training for fire personnel, the classes that they take for their beginning courses. We talked about contracts with personnel, you know, once they become involved with the training, continuing ed courses, outfitting new employees, different things like that. You know, we have it in contracts, or we have a contract that's been kind of used in the past where you just get a commitment from new personnel that are coming on board after you outfit and train them, that kind of thing, that they wouldn't work for the city for that long. We talked about, you know, contracts with, revenue contracts with the townships. That's, I believe, coming due in July, or June or July of this year. We currently have contracts with four different townships for coverage. If I miss something, Scott or Cheryl, right in the committee, let me know. We talked about, you know, the current millage out there, and I'm just kind of generalizing the meeting, but, you know, we're pretty much down to the bones with the revenue we collect for the fire, fire and EMS and their operating expenses with the current millage and everything. So talked about future revenue, millage lines. Like I said, a lot of different things. I'll put it in writing for the next council minutes.
Okay.
And get back to you on all that stuff.
It was a very productive meeting, so.
Yes.
Anybody got any questions? Okay. Any other committee reports that I don't know of? Administrators report. Cory?
Couple things. First off, we had interviewed quite a few people for this water position. We were hoping to have somebody hired in August, but it just took a long time for people to actually apply. So we interviewed, I don't know, three, four, five people. And we had an interview last week, a gentleman by the name of Joe Balser. And I would like to recommend that we hire Joe Balser for the full-time water department position.
This is the labor, not Troy's replacement, correct?
Troy's replacement.
Oh, Troy's replacement.
Yes. Which we were hoping that would have been, we would have had somebody.
What's his name again?
Joe Balser. We were hoping to have somebody hired in August, so they'd have plenty of time with Troy. So they're not really gonna have any time with Troy. Troy goes in for some procedures and he'll be out for like eight weeks here, another couple of weeks. So he'll kind of learn on the fly and then work with Troy when Troy gets back, so. But I would, I would like to hire Joel Balser if you guys would.
Can you give a little history, where he's from?
He's, he lives out on County Road 230, just across the county line there in Antwerp. Younger guy. He's got a mechanical background. Current position is, he's a group leader, team leader in a factory. He does have a diesel mechanics background, went to school for diesel mechanics, so he's, he's very good when it comes to mechanical abilities. Not married, no kids, so he pretty much fits in the criteria that we need right now at this moment.
Yeah, just to clarify, that's not a.
That's not the criteria.
True, true.
Be flexible to be on call all the time.
Yes, flexible to be on call, yes.
Driving around, kind of show him the facilities, what he's gonna be getting into?
Uh, he's been down to the water plant, but that's pretty much it. Looked over some prints that we had.
This is Dad Dar. Okay.
Okay, I'll make a recommendation on Joe Balser. Just Cory's went through the interviews, so, but I'll make a recommendation rehiring. Second. Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
And then this Thursday is our commodities that we do, the second Thursday of every month. With that being said, we still don't have a visiting person. We've kind of been taking care of things in-house, so we really don't have somebody to do commodities. We got somebody for this Thursday. I have been working with Pastor Steve and we went ahead and called Toledo today to see if we can kind of merge ours together. So what I would like to do is the same guy that goes and picks up all the commodities for the church would start picking up our commodities as well. They do it four times a month, we do ours once a month. We would, we would, eventually, we would pay the driver, the company that picks up their food. We agreed at $50 a month is what they would, we would pay him to take commodities. And then all of our commodities would go to the church. We would still be responsible for submitting our paperwork, but instead of them coming here, they would just go to the church the second Thursday of the month. So this Thursday would be the final commodities here, then starting January 13th, they would start going to the church.
Your every week, right? Is that what you said, every week?
We, our food pantry is open every week. We don't go to Toledo every week. But what has always seemed odd is that Cory and the city goes to Toledo and we go to Toledo. And Dan is really volunteering a lot of his time and effort and his, and his vehicle to go up there. So right now, Dan and I go to Toledo, we get our things, we get Christ Cupboards things. Now if we're gonna go for the city also, we'll get all three of them, all in one crack. Save the city the time and the effort and the machinery and the guys from going to Toledo. Plus save the space and the room and the person there too, because we're doing the same thing that, that the city's doing every, every week. City does it once a month, we do it every week. We have a lot of the same people anyways. So I think the people also are gonna be happy with that. It'll be a one-stop shop, so to speak. And so I think it saves the city quite a bit of money. It helps the people out a little bit. And to be real honest, the church does ministry better. So I think it's a win-win all the way around.
Okay.
It would actually be even cheaper for us to go that route.
Right.
Because it takes three to four hours to send a guy who's, you know, we'll say 19 bucks an hour, three, four hours, comes back unloaded, then we pay somebody to, for a few hours to hand the stuff out as well.
Okay.
That's a great idea, the merge.
Anything else, Cory?
Nope.
How's the well? I see they're starting to lay the pipe for the.
Yeah, they got one well in. It'll probably be the rest this week till they get the second well done. And then they will start running the line to the plant. They'll wait a little while to make sure those wells are, are good. And then they'll, they'll just start trenching, start putting it, putting the line in.
Are they working on the backside of the park right now at all? Or I keep hearing some machinery back in there, but maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, they got the, the vaults are back there, there. We had a, they end up tying in, the new line is about where the railroad tracks are, and it comes under the tracks there. And there's a pit and it goes all the way up behind the water plant. And then they went ahead and tied that in this past week to the existing older wells and added some, we added some additional valving and stuff like that. They set a new hydrant back there so we could use that as a place to flush as well. So, yeah, they have been working back there.
So everything's basically from the tracks to the water treatment plant, all that pipe's already in?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure if they actually just bored like conduit under and then they were coming later to actually install it, but that makes sense.
Okay, any other questions for administrator?
How soon does Joe plan on starting?
I spoke with him today and he was supposed to be calling over to Defiance to get his BCI appointment. And then he's free to go as soon as possible to CMH to get his drug screen and physical. I would love to get him in yet this week, honestly, but time will tell.
What's going on Pearl Street?
Gas company's upsizing gas line.
Okay.
From two to a four inch.
I meant to ask you that, I was curious what the.
That's for the new Van Cress. Yeah, we had, Mayor and I had that conversation when we discussed who was paying for that current job, so it'll be worth the conversation, that's for sure.
Say it, say that again.
I said it'd be worth the conversation to the gas company when we found out who was actually paying for that gas line for Van Cress.
Yeah.
Which is not Van Cress.
We got a lot of projects that may need more upgrading and.
Yeah.
I'll be on them.
Yep.
Have been, so. Any other questions for administrator? Okay, solicitor's report, Troy.
First thing I have is ordinance 2022-10, a third reading by caption only, annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville Village.
Okay, any other questions for you to vote on it? I'm gonna ask a question, you know, you're, you asked about adding, is now the time? Could you add that on the third reading?
Add what?
What Taylor wanted from that study.
If you decided to go with it right now, as is, it would come out of capital projects.
All right, so.
I have one question about budget. We talked about the contingency fund, the true contingency fund. Because I just, you know, when we had the first finance meeting, I didn't realize that money did not roll over from year to year.
Which it should.
Which it should. Is that gonna be set up that way?
Is everybody looking at me?
I don't know, because they're telling me to look.
You're talking about a contingency for police cruisers?
In a perfect world, yes.
Okay.
And so hopefully we can start having that, a perfect world.
So what had happened was he had money set aside for a cruiser, let's just say 23,000. And following year, he sets aside 20,000, 30,000. And then he goes to look, see how much money he has saved up for a cruiser and there's no money in there. I thought this would roll over. Well, they overspent in wages or medical or pension or something. And so Cheryl had to pull the money out of there to balance his books. So having 20, 30,000 set aside so you can purchase a cruiser in three years, the money was used for other funds that were overspent line items.
Okay.
And we're lucky that we had, didn't we get COVID money that paid for a cruiser?
Yeah, we got it.
Two.
Two of them.
But, yeah, but what I'm saying is to stay back on the track.
Yeah.
In your car, if you take it.
As long as the other line items don't overspend, there would be money to roll over.
Okay, good question though.
Just to clarify though, so the following, so if you're setting aside 20 or 30,000 each year, so then in next year's budget, you would need to, so say you have 30,000 set aside this year, next year, you would need to allocate 60,000. So each year you need to compound it, it's not like you just keep setting aside 30,000.
As long as that 30,000 didn't go to something else.
Correct.
Correct.
So.
Okay, any other questions before you vote? Now's the time.
Hopefully all the discussions have been had and you guys understand what all the actual capital projects and expenses are and stuff, so.
Good job, Finance Committee. You know, I looked it over.
Finance Committee.
You put a lot of hours on it, so. Okay, roll call. Or first, need a first floor, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Now, roll call.
Okay. Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2022-11, third reading by caption only, an ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees.
So move. Second, any discussion? That's a 6%, is that correct? Just so everybody knows.
Not across the board.
Not across the board, some.
Cross position.
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? Got a first, second, roll call?
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
And ordinance 2022-12, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency. See Cheryl.
That was amended.
On the desk tonight, you'll see the one that has two items on it rather than just one that went out in the packet, because I have to put in the amount that I received for the splash pad before I can spend it. It has to go into the appropriations, so I added it.
Yeah, that's for the.
To pay the.
Splash pad for the.
Standard aquatics or planning.
Yeah.
Planning person.
So whenever they give me a chunk of money, I have to put it in the appropriations each time.
So what is the permanent improvement fund?
That is when, mostly Cory, sells things at, what's the name of that?
Govdeals.
It all has to go into that fund for the auditors.
So that fund, permanent improvement fund, so anytime we sell an asset, that has to go into a permanent improvement fund? And how can that money be spent?
However you choose.
So it's essentially going into the general fund?
No, it's a whole new fund.
But.
Could be used like.
It could be used like a general.
For a certain form, we can't pay wages or anything.
Yeah. And according to the auditors, for example, if the, if there's a sale of something that's substantial, you might want to consider letting that department have first dibs, but it can be used for anything, as long as it's an asset to the village.
We've got dibs.
He's already spoken for.
A little bit of it.
So is that money accounted for, I guess, in like your capital, like capital outlay for other projects? So that's essentially just fluff for capital projects also?
About 19,000, it goes to a snow blower on our skid steer. That's the plan.
And that wasn't budgeted for in the budget we just approved? Okay.
That's something you just started looking at, right? In the last month or so?
We had looked at one, but it's just the chute. We couldn't find one with the tall enough chute to get in the back trucks and found a company that.
This amendment is for this year, 2022.
So all that money we've already received, you just have to allocate it. Move to.
Correct.
This, on your sheet here, it's 4902, does that need to be a 4904?
Yes.
And that needs to be an emergency, that's correct?
Yes.
Make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second.
A roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Second, third readings, ordinance 2022-12 by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance if declared an emergency.
So move. Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Questions for Troy?
Do we have, as far as those ordinances, we discussed?
Yeah, I'm about done with this. Tony sent me the couple of revisions and the add-on or whatever, probably by the end of the week, if not the first to next week, I'll have.
What, what those are on there and over to you?
I'll send you email to remind you.
Thank you.
Every day.
Anything new on the?
Same. We're still hounding them, but doing what we can.
We're still hounding them, but doing what we can.
Talk about the tower.
Tower people. I sent an email last Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday, I think it was.
We've got killers, lawyers involved too.
Yeah.
Who knows what you're going through.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are they still okay with everything, still proceeding?
Yeah, as far as I know.
Been in contact, getting a little nervous.
The only, I think the primary person nervous is the Economic Development Director. I mean, everybody'd like it done sooner or, but I mean.
Well, especially with everything going the way it is.
Yeah, frantic calls or anything like that, and if I don't hear anything in another day or so, I'll pick up the phone and, which usually means I gotta leave about a couple of voicemails, but. I said, as I said in the last email, their idea of, because they said they were going to expedite things for us. Their idea of expedite and the rest of our idea of expedite are two different things, so it's kind of like dealing with the railroad. Similar, not, not quite as bad, but similar.
Okay, any other questions for solicitor?
We are, we got the property. That's been.
It's got to be closed still, but it's done, yeah.
In contract.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's council's thoughts on the Labar Drive that's been set to sell that?
Oh, the, what, the twenty-eight?
Twenty acres, yeah.
I thought we were waiting.
Did we ask that?
The development.
Yeah, I thought we were kind of. There's not much, a little bit, but. Just kind of keep in your mind.
I'd hate to rush into a fire cell. Especially knowing the way, well, we would like to see happen out there. Wouldn't want to see it just sit idle. I'd rather us be in control of it if it's going to sit idle.
Okay.
My opinion.
Okay, any other comments? Okay. Department has police chief.
You saw the stats, I guess, that I sent out today to, for the month of November, if there's any questions about those. I hired, or I recommend you hire Samantha Weedmer as our next officer. We interviewed her probably two, three months ago. She was offered the job and turned it down, but now she wants to come work for us, so.
How do you pronounce that last name?
Weedmer, it's W E I D M E R. She is coming from Southeast Ohio, from the police department down there, Nelsonville. And she is from the Williams County area, so she's moving back home. So she'll be moving back the first week of January here, so she'll start January eleventh with us.
Okay.
So.
She has quite a bit of experience too, correct?
She's got about a year and a half.
Okay.
So.
Where should be her cabinet attorney?
Down in Hocking Hills, she, she was at college there at Hocking Hills.
Okay.
I'll recommend that we hire Samantha Weidler, is how you say it.
Weedmer.
Weidler?
Weed.
Weedmer.
Weed her.
Okay, yeah. Samantha.
Make a motion.
Second, roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Okay.
Don't think I have anything else other than that.
Anybody got any questions for the chief?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, I have a, did you ever get with the sheriff's office about next Sunday night, you know, with anything going?
Uh, no, because I actually received a phone call this morning from Denise.
Okay.
And we don't feel it's going to be necessary.
Good.
So.
Just, in case the fire department, the new Marx Tower, what's the status on that?
Well, we are in, still trying to negotiate a contract with commissioners on how we're paying, how we're going to pay them back. The nine-one-one, through the nine-one-one levy, I guess it probably would be.
What, I guess, what is there, can you bring me up to speed, what is there to negotiate on, I guess, as far, like a certain percentage of our allocation or something like that?
Yeah, what the cost of it, the total cost of it. So we're negotiating, so somehow, I believe we can pay through it, through the nine-one-one levy, all right? So basically commissioners were fronting us the money, the levy or would pay, we would pay them. Uh, I don't remember the figure, I don't know, was it thirty-year, we were looking for a thirty-year loan on that, and then we would pay them back. So we would give them so much money per year, they would be like due the first of the, January one of the first, first of the year.
And that would be basically out of your existing allotment of the nine-one, the nine-one-one?
Yes, yeah, so.
So less revenue for the department going.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it's, basically the county would be paying about the nine-one-one fund, so. It benefits the whole county, not just us, so they were supposed to open up bids, actually today. It got canceled due to electrical, they've got some type of electrical issue or electricity for that tower they are looking into. So that's been postponed for right now, so. Once everything is signed and completed, they'll start there. We're still working on getting the shelter house, the plan for that, because you gotta have some type of shelter house, regenerator, things of that nature, so we're still working on that. But once it is done, signed contracts, once they do their ground checks, make sure they don't find artifacts, arrowheads or something like that, because that would just stop the whole project. You know, as long as everything goes smoothly, we're probably looking for a nine to twelve month completion date, so.
Is there, so you said that, an electricity issue, that's, you're saying like a lack of power there?
I don't know what it is, I just got an email saying due to electrical or electricity for that spot. They are looking into it, so I'm not sure what the, it was just caused a delay, so.
Does it need a generator, I'm guessing so?
Yeah, it will have a generator. So that's, that is required by the state of Ohio for the Mark system. So you gotta have the generator, I believe you have to have the shelter, you know, so.
You're still having radio issues?
Yes.
Adjusting, yeah, just adjusting on the fly.
So.
Been working on this for two years, right, the problem, your radio problem?
Well, I've been here four, so it's been a.
Okay, four years.
Almost four years. Yeah, so. We still have issues, so.
Yeah, we need it bad. Okay, any other questions for the chief?
You were informed of the signage on Haven Drive is all.
Yes, I got, I received a call about that today, so there is, for residents that live on Haven Drive, there is no parking on the street, and it's both sides of the street. There were four signs placed today on each side of the street out there, those will be enforced.
What's the, I'm just curious, what's the basis on that? Like, is it a street width thing, or what are we basing our no parking on the streets signs just?
Well, for one, obviously on our snow routes, which that's not a snow route, people are always parked there. It's just tight quarters, I'm not sure exactly how wide Haven Drive is, but it is fairly narrow once you get a car. Parked there, nine out of ten times, if somebody is parked in front of their house, there's a driveway right across the street. So that makes, you know, if you're pulling out and going one way is one thing, but if you're going the other way, then, you know, we've, we've got a ton of calls and complaints on cars just being parked on the street, so.
Like overnight or two or three days, you know?
It ain't like a fifteen, twenty minute thing, it's, yeah, sometimes days on end.
And does something like that have to go through the street committee?
I wouldn't think so.
I mean, I know that when there was discussions.
For other streets?
Yeah, on other streets, currently, yeah, that went through the street committee first.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I guess that's, the reason I ask as far as standards go, it's if we're just sort of picking and choosing other streets and not, we should have a basis on, if a street is X, is this wide and curbed, then that's the policy, rather than picking and choosing, I guess, would just be a, I think that would make sense. And that way all of our streets are the same.
I know there was only one sign that was out there on that street, that said no parking this side of the street, and it was back towards K-Spirit Miller Road. You know, that's the only sign that's been there since the day I started. So I don't, you know, we've, we've had a few complaints out there about parking, but never, it's never been an issue, but, so.
Try and see what happens, but signs are up and you're going to enforce it.
Yes, they put the signs up.
Yeah, I noticed them when I came in, so.
Because I didn't feel, you know, we didn't enforce it before because I didn't feel it was properly marked. So the points we have with the parking of the cars, they were down opposite end, there were no signs in that area, I felt like it's not properly marked and we weren't enforcing it. So I told him if he wanted, if that's what they were going to do, they needed to get more signs up on both sides, so that's what they decided they wanted to do, so.
Okay, any other comments for the chief?
Moving forward, I guess, is that something real quick?
We need more twenty-five mile hour signs on Ryan Street. Even that sheriff, there's cars across the street from, slowing down.
So there is, there's not signs to slow anybody down, whether it's a no parking sign.
Do we have one of those portable flashing?
No.
Well, what do those cost, a lot?
Twenty-five grand.
Okay.
I'll stand out there for twenty-five grand. Put Fisher out there with his hairdryer.
I actually, at my cheese conference earlier in the year, someone had suggested maybe we should get one of those, you know, so I looked into the pricing of it, just a sign to mount on a pole is five grand at least. To get one, like a mobile.
Is that solar powered and it flashes and it's got?
I didn't ask how it was, was run, I just asked what the price would be for one of those, and then having, I got like two or three prices from him, you know, but the one that we could move around, that sits like on a little trailer, like Antwerp has. And, you know, we're talking at least twenty-five grand. Yeah, that's what I said too, I thought, when he just said the sign that you could sit on a pole, mount to a pole was over five grand.
You'd write a lot of tickets to pay for that.
Yeah.
I had a question, like Haven Drive, I don't live out there, but was it a more increased people parking on the road? I mean, you sell homes, you have more family members, more cars, all of a sudden their driveway's not big enough, now you start parking on the road, they do it for a while, then people start, you know, having complaints and things like that, is that kind of what happened here recently, or is that just? I, I was, I was wondering.
I mean, I don't know, people are getting more cars, but we do get the complaints, I don't know how many they get, I get calls once in a while about cars being parked there. I'm backing out of my driveway, I'm about hit so-and-so's car, I don't know whose car it is, this car's got Indiana plates, it's been sitting there for two days. You know, it might say no parking, and they're just, you know, they go down a couple houses and they'll park there, they'll just park across the street from it, so.
I, I'm assuming at some point in time, that was already discussed for those signs to go up.
I don't ever remember people parking there growing up, and there's a lot of younger families and, you know, you don't want, keep people parking on the street and kids are playing and then a ball goes out and some hot shot's going, you know, faster than they should be going, and somebody runs out and gets hit.
I would say.
I think it's a big hazard to have cars parked in that street.
I would say though, cars parked, having the presence of cars parked in the streets typically slows people down.
It's, it should.
I think it's a give and take.
Yeah.
But if you got a small kid behind that car and he darts out, it's, it's over with.
There's no sign on either side of the road.
Yeah.
Kids are walking the road and they go anywhere.
But yeah, I, I believe that probably had to have been discussed at some point in council's time years ago, because there was one sign that was up out there. All I asked Cory to do was to properly mark that street so that we could take enforcement action.
In most cases, the car's parked out there and there's plenty of room on the driveway, that's what I've noticed.
So.
Just laziness going on.
You need sidewalks too.
Sure, yeah. I think the ordinance committee should get together and discuss basically having a policy, so if the road is this, like, and where it's factored in, so if the road is X feet wide and there's sidewalks, then this is the policy for that, and then if this, instead of, you know, somebody could accuse Cory of saying, hey, I don't, Cory doesn't like me, so that's why he put a no parking sign in front of my.
That call's coming tomorrow.
I'm sure it is, again, that's the thing, it's, we should have policy basis for those decisions.
Yeah, but, and I agree with that, but again, at some point in time, somebody here had to have.
But there was already a sign there.
Yeah, because there was already a sign there, and all I asked him to do was properly mark it, get more signs out there.
Yeah, I, what I'm saying is from here forward, from here forward, actually having basis for, for those decisions, so.
Okay. Thanks, chief.
All right, thank you.
Up, fire any EMS chief, Kramer?
I have a new applicant, I'd like to present to council for recommendation along the department, it is Kenton Wagler. He comes from Southern Indiana and recently moved to town, he's been in town about a year, and is the first interest in the department, so.
Okay. I'll make a recommendation, Kenton Wagle?
Wagler.
Okay. I'll make a recommendation, Kenton? Has he had fired?
No.
No, never been a fireman before where he came from? I'll motion the mayor's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Yes.
Of course, the standard, I'll be pending drug screen, background check, and all that. I spoke with the grant writers before I came in, the truck is pretty much done, the dealer went down just before Thanksgiving, did final inspection on it. They had a door they had to repaint, and they were waiting at that time up for the tank, the portable tank, and some bracketry. The tank came in, the bracket says as of yet if not, he's hoping to have us to, have it to us by the end of the year. We had to do an amendment on the grant for an extension on time, and that has been submitted, he had to submit two, one has been approved, the one for the truck is not yet. Hopefully by next council meeting, that'll be approved, so we can get that squared away. It'll be delivered by the end of the year if that's the case, if not, we'll have to wait till January.
Okay.
I think that's about all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Okay, thanks Scott.
Thank you.
Park director, the park's pretty well shut down, I'm guessing, they're not here tonight, fiscal officer report.
You have in front of you the fund status, November utility, income tax, and mayor's court collections, the up-to-date revolving loan report. We have a notice for what's coming in twenty twenty-three from AEP. And I need to find out from council if you want to have a post audit meeting with the auditor. They're done with our audit. They're done with our audit. So. That is where you have a meeting like this, and she comes and explains everything in the audit, how, because there's things that you'll want to know.
I think it probably makes sense to have a meeting, there's things we should know.
And so it's up to you, council, you don't have to have a post audit, usually it's a finance committee, but if full council wants it.
We've never done full council before.
Not since I've been doing it now.
I'm not on finance, but I would be curious to see or hear the, hear the results, does that have to be a, basically, I mean, obviously, because it's not a committee, or it's either a committee or full council, right?
Noticed and everything.
Or none at all.
Yeah.
You all get copies.
Before the meeting?
I think she emailed them cheating.
Yeah, I'll say, last time she's emailed them directly, yeah.
And then you have the option of having her come and sit down and explain or answer questions or whatever.
But she will come to full council if we ask for it.
But it'll be a separate meeting, it's not a council meeting.
Okay.
We usually have it during the day.
So if it's just finance committee, would I still be able to attend? Even though I'm not a finance committee?
We're all open meetings.
Well, I understand that, but.
Right.
You're not allowed to be spoken to unless spoken to.
Correct. So she'll set the meeting up and then whoever can come?
Right.
Okay, that's what council wants, whoever will come, they'll get a full report.
If you ask a question, I mean, having an opening of full council, everybody can be here, you can ask questions. If you do committee, then it's kinda restricted to a degree, isn't it? So I'd say full council.
I agree.
Okay. Would it be a special, so meeting or just...
Special council meeting, Cheryl.
Just a meeting with the auditor.
The public is invited and...
Yeah, they're always, 24-hour notice on the board.
Okay.
You can come and they, it's not, the audit is not complete until we sign off on it. The mayor signs off on it.
It'll be sometime this year though, right?
It'll be sometime like next week. Yeah. Got us done. She wants to write us off for two more years and move on. Okay. That's all I have.
Any questions for Cheryl? Okay. My report, the Christmas cruise through, I went through last night and it's outstanding. Really, from, every year it just gets better, so I recommend, encourage people to go, tell your friends. It's amazing. They put a lot of work into it, so that's all I have.
I have one more thing. I forgot. At the next meeting, I'll need to know two people that council recommends to be on volunteer firefighter, firefighters dependence fund.
Who's on now?
Ron Beverley and Charlie.
I'll do it again next year.
Okay.
And I'm guessing Ron will do it also, I can check with him.
And two from the fire department.
Anything else needs to be come for this council? Yes.
I got a question. I don't know how the city runs, but does the water system and the sewage system have a generator backup?
Yes.
So we lost Grant, we be all right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good question.
Can it fuel oil, but runs it? Cool, straight cool.
Okay.
Make motion adjourned.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.